Yeah.
It's seven thirty.
Yep.
Six thirty-four.
We call it order six thirty-four.
Presence, Dan Uy, Martin Staff, Wendy Johnson, Barbara Resman, Heather Banda, absent Jason Moore, um, Stephanie Finksit, and then Township Market, other than Jack. I'll take some notes. Okay, we have no public comments right now?
Wendy.
Uh.
Wendy. Microphone. Microphone.
No public comments right now. Uh, motion to accept the meeting minutes from May fourth.
Motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, Jack, you wanna give us a financial status update?
Um, Touch a Truck was, I don't know, I thought fairly successful. Uh, three oh two in sales, thirty-four in tips, fifty-three in donations, so three eighty-nine, um, in total. Uh, take a look at your spreadsheet, and I have that represented on there as well. In the top section, and I'll continue to do that, um, as the events tick by, so, um, any questions on that?
And we had a check come in today, correct?
Maybe, um, Arden just opened a check for, uh, five hundred dollars, so I'll put that on the spreadsheet. Tell me again who that was from, do you remember, Arden?
Five hundred, oh, Cassiolas.
Cassiolas Twin Twist, which is, um, nice.
Nice surprise.
You know, don't expect, I thought they were, you know, pretty much going out of business, but it's good that they're not, so.
Okay. Uh, Touch a Truck, in spite of the weather, like Jack said, we still, you know, had a nice day. Um, thoughts on any improvements or changes for next year?
Couple of comments I heard from people were that they, one of the reasons why they like ours so much is because of the variety we have, that a lot of places that hold a Touch a Truck, all they're having is their township equipment there. And we have such a variety by inviting all these companies and that, so that's one of the comments I heard. And also that we're the only ones that have the helicopter.
Yeah, that was a big draw.
Something I will add, are, are we sending thank you letters to the people that did show up?
I've been a little overwhelmed to get that done, but yes, I will get it done.
I just wanna make sure that we do, and if you need help or something, you know, um, I mean, you think about it, at the end of the day, these people are bringing their trucks, they bring personnel, I mean, it costs them money to be there, you know, and a lot of them are very happy to be there.
In the rain.
Yeah, I mean, it was unfortunate it was in the rain, but, you know.
Didn't cause a damper of their spirits, they were smiling with the kids, it was great.
I mean, that one, it almost has like a little remote control, I don't know if you guys seen it, and they were letting it, the kids, you know, play with it, and, you know, it was working the boom and stuff like that, it was really awesome. Like I said, each one of those companies, you know, it costs them money to put personnel and their vehicles here, you know, for the kids to do that.
I always have sent them, and, you know, I've just been a little overwhelmed.
That's fine, um, did we hear from trucks and matics, did, I mean, they, these do okay?
No, but they did indicate they would like to come back next year, so I assumed it wasn't horrible, you know, so.
Just, uh, as a side note, I had a lot of people ask me at the gate where they were.
Okay.
So, we might wanna consider bringing them closer to the entrance, or putting them down on the other side. Um, I don't know how packed it was down there, but.
We had room over there.
It was just a matter of getting them in, because when the, um, fancy trucks rolled in, it got kinda blurry back there, you know.
It's hard to know where they were, and I thought they would have that big flag thing they have.
Yeah.
And they didn't have it, so.
So, I was just pointing people back to the corner, I said, they're back in the, in the corner there, and, you know, that's where a lot of people headed over there. Um, the only thing that I know of that we had some problems with, we're parking a Dollar General, though, um, it's under different management, so they're not as outspoken as they've been in the past, you know, but I, I had a bunch of people walking, uh, over from there now. Sorenzi's lot was out of, you know, we couldn't get it, um, so that really was the only other alternative.
Yeah, I mean, I, I kinda gave Dollar General heads up when I was there, first thing in the morning, I said, hey, we got Touch a Truck coming, you know, we posted, stay out of the lot, but, and they're like, it is what it is, you know, there's not much else we can do.
And they still have the signs.
Yeah.
I think we told everybody.
No, I know it's on the, uh, uh, Fall Festival, uh, application too.
One thing, though, is, you know, probably a lot of people that do park over there end up running into gets home.
Yeah.
You know?
Which is, which is a win-win, and, and I think Dollar General would be good, you know, happy with that, but when it gets to a point where they start parking down the, the side, you know, there's, you're parking up against the building, when people start parking down the side, then it's hard for their regular customers to get in and out, and I understand that, you know, but, um, I think overall, the, the flow was consistent, and I don't think there, there was too many problems that I heard of.
I mean, it's something we're always gonna have to battle, it just is what it is, you know, um, right now, this is where we host all of our events, and, you know, parking is a primary, you know, whoever gets here first, kind of.
Yep.
Okay, movie night. Um, does anybody have any other ideas besides Mario?
Yeah, I haven't seen a release date on that, do we wanna run like an old school movie? You wanna do like Sandlot?
Mario, Mario has been released in my home.
It's your home.
Which one?
We need it on DVD. The new Mario Brothers movie.
Only thing I, I can think about that is copyright.
Oh, yeah, I would never.
We have to be careful if we're, like, buying it and then showing it, now, of course, we're not charging for it, which is, which is a plus.
Yes.
Alright, but we still have, there's still that gray area of how soon after the release can it go into this type of, you know, uh, scenario? I don't know, I don't know the answer to that question, I've tried.
Did you see a release date at all?
No, I have not seen a release date.
Huh.
Is there like a, your second choice would be, I don't know much about the movies that are out.
Hmm.
Were popular with the kids.
Like I said, if we wanna do like a retro movie, maybe we can go back to like Sandlot, or I wouldn't do Jaws per se.
Sandlot?
Yeah. Angels in the Alpha, like, those are always my.
Bad News Bears.
Yeah. Wow.
That's Royback. Well, that had some bad words, huh?
I like the classic idea, though, like you were saying, that's, you know, I mean.
Steph, did you get a release date from Mario, did you see anything by any chance?
Yeah, I saw, I thought it came out this month.
Yeah, but we're up in, we're what, eight days away now?
Little Mermaid.
Nine days away. Let me double check, I thought it said the middle of June, that's whenever I seen it, but it still didn't give me a, a date.
See, there's the Sonic movie, there's Minions.
It says June twenty twenty-three. Amazon Video and iTunes on May sixteenth. See for a box, we'll bring it out.
He's done?
Okay, just put it in the, the box, put it in.
Yeah, I don't see a date yet.
Or bring it to me.
Um, we have. Hmm, so what are you guys thinking, you wanna go retro movie, and then? You guys wanna try for another kids' movie?
Whatever.
Yeah, I'm like a.
Yeah, I'd have to see if the library has it, I think the library has it, Kansasburg, they got a pretty, pretty big selection down there.
Yeah, and they can get things from other libraries too, so.
Yeah, that wagon.
Yeah, and they have a mascot.
Yes, they do.
That later.
I was down there going.
Alright, do we want?
Try for that then?
Yeah, why don't I stop down there? I'll try for, I'll stop, I don't think I have anything going on Saturday morning, I'll stop down at the library Saturday morning, and then I'll have a definite answer, if, I'll, I'll text the group of like, the top three that I'm seeing there, and then we'll go from there.
You can just go online, like, 'cause, I mean, if you have a card, I have a card, you can go online and you can see anything, and if it's at another library, they'll get it.
Yeah, I think I got noticed my wagon card expired. Okay, well, as soon as we have it, you know, movie, I'll get it out there on Facebook. Um, setup and testing of equipment? Do we know how we stand with our equipment this year, and there's been no changes to it, right?
Hasn't been used, uh, since last time, so I'm sure the screen, um, will be fine, um. We could test the, uh, projector, though.
Um. Which brings us, well, I'll wait till we get to that, um, do we have Community Day after Fall Festival? Yeah, okay, so Fall Festival, uh, we wanna vote on Mike the Balloon Guy in voice, twenty-eight hundred for the petting zoo and the ponies for two days, eleven to eight.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, tattoo artist, twelve fifty for the two days?
Motion?
Motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Rockwall, thirty-four hundred for the two days, I'll motion, second?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anything else that we need to vote on for Community Day, um, I think I said that.
Well, that's for Fall Festival.
Hmm?
That was for Fall Festival.
Oh, so you have Fall Festival.
Yeah.
There's another one for Fall Festival.
Yeah, the Tina Daniels Band.
Okay.
And that, the paperwork for that Steel City miniature golf was in, I gave it to him, it was in with, uh, vendor stuff.
That was, uh, signed copy, he was sending back to me.
So, the Tina Daniels Band was how much?
Eight hundred for a two-hour set on Sunday.
Motion?
I'll make a, I'll make, I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, is there any other things for Fall Festival for? Bills right now? Okay.
So, that should be our four bands are set then.
Okay.
We'll just do the small acts in between.
Okay. Um, Heather, did, um, you and your daughter say anything to Lori, 'cause I haven't gotten over there, about them dancing?
I'll see her this whole week, and it's their recital.
Okay.
I'll see Lori.
Okay.
Friday, Saturday, and Sunday this weekend.
Alright. Thank you. It's like, every time I think about it, she's not open yet, you know? Okay. Anything else right now for Fall Festival?
The mascots.
Oh, yes, go ahead.
Okay, so, um, I reached out to Chick-fil-A in Brid, I did the Chardiers, or, um, the one in Bridgeville. So, they got back to me, they want me to fill it out for them, so it looks like, instead of doing the Washington, we'll do the one that's, um, it's not Chardiers, what am I thinking?
Bridgeville.
Call your township. Um, uh, the Armadillo is gonna come for sure, I'm still waiting for the Wild Things, but I haven't gotten to all my personal emails, so, could've gotten back to me, I did email them, I did get it on the Washington County Tourism Site. Um, I also, when I was at the library, asked them about the pretzel, and I taught to Chelsea at Sarah's, so, the pretzel has become very, very popular, but I said, well, we're local, you know, so, she's gonna get back to me, um, she was a little overwhelmed, she wasn't sure if they were charging, and I said, well, nobody's been charging, you know, this is, you know, we're not charging for anything, and so, um, so, she's gonna get back, I'm gonna get back to her in July, and she thinks that the pretzel should be able to come for some amount of time, and then also at the library, they have the dog. And the dog, and the frowny, and Wendy's has, the Wendy little girl and the, uh, Frosty, they were all at some event, I think a reading event.
That was a reading event.
Which we have, so do we wanna have this dog? The only thing with this dog mascot, if you look at your library card, that's the mascot.
The wagon, yeah, it's a wagon.
Um, it's the, um, the manager at the library, her son, who does soccer, travel and regular, so, we gotta go around his schedule.
Okay.
I told her, any amount of time, we would love to have the dog, do we wanna, I don't think we wanna have anybody for Community Day, but maybe. You know, I, I said, if they wanna come Community Day, I was, um, and then, uh, I guess that's it. So, hopefully, we can get, maybe get the pretzel come, do we wanna maybe ask the reading, the, the library one to come for our reading? When is our reading day?
Well, let me check with Salvation Army and C.
Yeah, 'cause that's more of.
'Cause that's their, that's really kinda like their.
Okay.
So, let me check with them.
Okay, but I'll try to get them for the Fall Festival, and then if they wanna come for, if the pretzel wants to come for Community Day, I kinda doubt, it doesn't sound like she's got her act together yet, like, and a lot of people wanna have this pretzel, I don't think it has the name yet.
Okay.
That I saw. So, that's it.
Yeah, and if you have any problem with Wendy's, let me know, and I'll get hold of the, I actually found out the guy I met was not the new regional manager, he is actually the son of the owner of the Western PA franchises.
So, where's the closest Wendy's?
Canisburg.
Canisburg, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm not sure if that's where the mascot came from, that was at this other event, and then I can also try to see if we can get that frowny.
Yeah.
If we want, I mean, I don't know how many we wanna have. But.
All of them, Barb, I want them all.
All of them, okay.
I mean, I doesn't, don't think they hurt, you know?
They were a hit last year, I mean.
I, I say get as many as we can, I mean, I think they're cool, I mean.
Yeah.
Okay.
Coming from someone who dressed in a costume, I think it's pretty cool.
I never have, but my little grandson just made their development team.
Oh, really? My kids love the River Hound, he's like a good boy.
Okay, I've never seen him, okay.
I think State Farm actually has one too, but I can't remember what it is, I mean, there's more out there, definitely, so.
Okay.
But these, um, this, um, reading event was for Muse Elementary and South Central, 'cause they're Title I schools. And so, we went into it, and I'm like standing in the stadium, like, snapping all these pictures of every mascot that came out, you know, talk to the handlers, so. Alright, sounds good. Uh, Community Day, quote for the bounce houses, uh, six hundred and twenty-one oh two for the water slide, eight twenty-one oh two for the attended water slide.
If I can just comment on this?
Sure.
So, we have two competing quotes here, so I got a quote for, a quote for the water slide from House of Parties, advertising in the I Love Cecil group, and then I got a quote from United Inflatables, which we used last year, and he was like, I don't know, he was in the mood to talk when I was on the phone with them this time, which was not how it was last time, and he was the one who pitched the idea of the toddler water slide. I believe House of Parties also has a similar toddler water slide, but it wasn't, I didn't ask for it in, when I asked her originally to quote for us. So, if we are interested in staying local, and we wanna give her a try, I thought her price was comparable, like, for the water slide, it was compares, it was comparable to United Inflatables, offered to provide an attendant, if you wanted to do two hundred extra dollars, so, that's where we are right now, we could either, well, I mean, that's where we are, so I'm interested in everybody's comments, on like one versus two bounce houses, and which one you would rather go with.
We had a lot of kid volunteers that helped with the bounce houses, so, if we need attendance, or do we wanna have?
We didn't really have a lot of volunteers for Community Day, so, this will be the first year we're asking student volunteers, and last year, the water slide was pulled over by kids, and not enough attendants, and like, some of our attendants also weren't really paying very much attention to the water slide, um, so there's that, but if we get student volunteers again this year, I, I'm sure they can handle it if we get more, we just haven't asked.
We didn't have enough volunteers, that was our big problem, yeah.
Well, we're gonna be more available if we're not in concessions too. And are you, so are we still planning on doing like the field day competitions, I think those are cool too, like, you still wanna do them this year as well?
Yeah, I think so.
Perfect.
No real eggs this time.
You're no fun.
Oh, my God, there were like cracked eggs everywhere I was finding.
So, personally, I like the idea of having the two water slides, one for, 'cause I even talked to some people that said that, you know, having all the kids of all ages on that one water slide, they kinda felt was a little, you know, better too, to, um. I'm all for trying somebody new, if everybody else is too, if you wanna.
Are they the same size?
Uh, the water slides were, and, um.
Okay.
I have to look and see her toddler bounce house, so if we did that, the, the only risk that I could say is that if we did that, we're not approving it then until next month, unless we vote earlier. So.
Well, we can vote via text messages, yeah.
So, do you want me, then I will ask her to add a quote for the second bounce house?
Now, what about Dunk Tank?
I don't have a quote yet for that, I don't have it for the next meeting.
Okay.
I did get a quote for the water, it was like two hundred and fifty dollars.
Okay.
So, I'm writing that we're tabling this until I can get an updated quote from House of Parties.
Can you also find out how many gallons per minute that they recommend for those? Because what I'm running into is actually we're pushing about sixty PSI off of those spigot by Pavilion Two. So, depending on the feet of hose that I need, and honestly, I don't know, if, if we do both, I don't know how we're gonna do the slip and slide aspect of it.
Um. The toddler bounce house was a wet or a dry, so we could technically just have a toddler bounce house and not be water.
I think it kinda defeats the purpose of what, you know, and not, I, I don't know, like, I, like, I know we always, I don't wanna say this, I mean, I think that water traction is, you know, basically what, what we wanna push, and I think giving, if that small one is not, if that toddler one is not wet, them kids are, you know, they may go in there, but I think they're gonna wanna.
They're gonna want.
They're gonna wanna be with the water, you know?
I know, I would want to, and I would.
And they'll probably be like wet anyway from the other.
Alright, so you're gonna check on the PSI on that, and you're gonna get another quote?
GPM, gallons per minute, that way I can figure out how close we need to be, and how far I gotta run these hoses. I know I brought my hundred and twenty-foot hose last time, and I, probably a good thing we did, because I think that was the only one that reached that big one. So, we'll have to plan where we want both of these. I don't know, we thinking just behind Pavilion Two, like, closer towards the creek and a little bit of an opening area there? Are you trying to get closer to the ball field, like?
Well, I'm sure we can't have it on the ball field, right, Jack?
No, there's no water supply there either.
We can't have, have it there, so we have to at least stay off of that area.
I'm sorry, where is that?
I'm just trying to figure out where we put these pavilions, I'm just trying to think of the logistics, like, I, in my mind, I'd always try to think of this stuff ahead of time.
Best, uh, water supply is over by Pavilion Three, it's separate from everything else.
It, it's not, it's, I'm only pushing forty PSI over there, I got sixty at Pavilion Two is what I, what I tested today. Um, and I know last year, I, I found that kind of like, it wasn't as strong last year, I don't know if, like, if it's, it might be just the head of that thing's not be able, it couldn't, you know, hold that water as well as the other one, I don't know, but I was actually, I, I tested it today, um, just to double check, 'cause that's, if we run too much hose, and we're trying to, I, last thing I wanna do is try to plant for water and us not be able to provide water, so, again, that's the way just my brain works, the logistics end of it. But, we're thinking about, well, how to, if the township would be okay, if setting this up at Pavilion Two, like, behind Pavilion Two?
I mean.
Or right to the right of it?
Even if it's right there, it's still close enough that it's, sorry, it's going to feel like one big event, instead of having it so separated over Pavilion Three.
I mean, you can set up anywhere you want to, I mean, that's, you want to.
Be okay with that?
Yeah, that's, that's fine, it's just, um, the, the, all I was saying about Pavilion Three is it's separate, I'm not saying it's better.
Right.
It's a separate water source than what you're gonna get at Pavilion Two, and, one and two. Um, you know, if that's, that's where you wanna go, if you wanna split them, that's, that's fine too. And keep people moving through the, uh, uh, the day, you know, the events, so.
Yeah, but I think the way we had it last year, a lot of people that were over on the water stuff never came over near.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, that's for sure, that's for certain.
That's what I wanna avoid.
And that's what I'm thinking, if you wanna keep them moving through, you know, uh, you might wanna split that out, I mean, the water's there. Pressure-wise, I can find out if they can increase it, um, I don't know, um.
I'm just trying to figure out if sixty PSI, it was kinda fluctuating between sixty and seventy, if that's enough for, you know, the amount of hose that we need for both water slides, is, is basically all I need to try to figure out.
Is it, is it volume that you need, or?
That's what I, that's what I was trying to figure out, I mean, with the gallons per minute, um, and so, if you can, Steph, just try to figure out the gallons per minute, that way I can try to work it out, if it, if it'll be enough.
I guess, I guess I'm asking, is it, is it the force that you need as opposed to the amount of water?
Well, that's all gonna be dictated by the foot of hose, and how high we have to hook up that one hose, that, that all comes into play.
I think I'm wondering, like, gallons per minute, like, how that, like, relates to the actual bounce house versus just like, you know? Like, I mean, you could operate it probably with, I mean, it's a wet, dry slide, so it could be no water at all.
Yeah, I mean, if it's pushing anywhere like two gallons per minute, three gallons per minute, I think we'll be okay. If it's more than that, then, and I don't think it is, because most of them are just, uh, like sprayers on top of there, so I think we'll be okay, but the only thing I worry about is running two, again, two wa, wet bounce houses, and then, like, I don't think I'm gonna be able to do the slip and slide, 'cause then I gotta, I gotta try to make a third hose out of that same spigot, and I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, that might be pushing too much.
This is out there, but here's a question, the water supply out of the concession stand is actually, municipal water, right, where the other ones aren't? Or is it all on a water bill?
A se, two separate sources. See, the water coming in from, uh, Pavilion Three is coming from Public Works' side of things.
Okay.
The water coming from here is coming, uh, from, the other ones are coming from here.
Okay, but it's still all.
Same water, you know, it's just.
So, I don't know if there could be any thought to actually running a hose from the concession stand, maybe for the slip and slides, and?
That's, that's six, seven hundred feet.
I was gonna say.
Could run a, I'm sorry to interrupt you, go ahead.
I think that, yeah, six, seven hundred feet, I mean, that's, that's, I think that's gonna be too much.
Would if you ran them though, to along the side?
I'm thinking from the bathroom, if you're gonna do Pavilion Two, we could go from the bathroom down.
Is there a water hookup on the outside of?
Should be water, should be water hookups at every Pavilion Two.
Yeah, I know, and that was, that was my other option, was to run a hose, but that would be about three hundred feet from Pavilion One. You'd run that one to run the water slide, and then run Pavilion Two water to both bounce houses. That was my other option, but then we're gonna have some, we're gonna need another two hundred-foot hoses.
I know, Darlene told me last year she would be willing to.
I have one hundred and twenty-foot hose.
She said she would have a hose, 'cause, I mean, I just really wanna see, not everybody's so split up by the tennis courts and all the courts, because I just think people just did not go back and forth at all.
Do you wanna stay away from Pavilion Three then?
Yeah, I think, 'cause I think if we do, we have Steel City coming in, they're gonna be on one of the courts, correct? And then we have the kids thing coming in, they're gonna be, correct me if I'm wrong, in the outfield, we're playing to them in the outfield, by the stage area.
And there's forty of them, how many booths?
Fifty.
Fifty? That's a lot.
Aren't they only here for like, three hours, or?
No, they're here the whole time, she emailed me eleven to confirm that the time was eleven to three.
Oh, okay.
She said longer than that they would be.
Yeah.
But I said, we're done at three, so.
Okay.
Can we let them in through the back, Jack? Behind the tennis courts?
Yeah.
And they be able to drop off their stuff, like we do at Fall Festival, kinda?
My understanding was, um, parents aren't even allowed to help them in with stuff.
Right.
So, I mean, we could, they could drop them off right there, and, you know, I mean, that would be the quickest route to wherever, you're putting them in the outfield?
I think that's the plan.
I think, yeah, an outfield, stage area somewhere in there.
Oh, okay, so you're not, you're not talking about, like, where the food trucks go in, in Fall Festival?
No, I wouldn't push them that far back.
Yeah. I mean, I'd like to, you know, I'd like to know kinda what the, the layout's gonna be, so I can tell Public Works, so, I mean, if you can, you know, give me a, you know, some idea, so.
Cause then we'd have the cornhole. The, is it definitely a pie eating con, a pie making contest, is that a definite?
Yeah.
Okay, so, which, which will be the same place as where the.
Mm-hmm.
Um, chili was last year, so then the cornhole will be the same, I would expect maybe we would have more people this year for cornhole. And then wherever we put the other things you do with the kids.
Who's judging the, have we reached out?
No, not to my knowledge. You did such a good job on that last year.
Me?
Yeah, didn't you do it?
Arden did it.
And we just grabbed people who were there.
What?
Got the judges for the chili contest.
Well, we sent out, I think we sent out a letter to the supervisors, and then we also added a couple extras to. Well, we sent out, I think we sent out a letter to the supervisors and then we also added a couple extras to.
Yeah, well, we we got the Maestros guys and then Penny, but I wanted Nate Mass to come.
I think we should ask, um, cause I know when I asked Always Safe, even though they couldn't do it, they were like happy to be asked, you know, that that maybe like any of our.
Saudi from Range.
Donate, we should reach out to them. It's a couple weeks away.
That's right, Christina wanted, was Christina wanted to do it right from range and she just couldn't do it last year.
Alright, do we wanna start that list then? We'll do Christina from Range.
Want me to stop down Always Safe?
Yeah, stop down at Always Safe. Then we'll do the Maestros again.
So what time should I tell them?
I don't know if Maestros will, will they be as interested in the pie since they're hot sauce? Kind of felt like a nice fit for chili.
I know, I know, um.
I mean, Penny would be good for that.
Yeah, definitely, we're gonna get Penny there.
By the way, I, um.
I didn't know if maybe she'd wanna enter, like if any of the local businesses would want.
I asked her about the chili and she said no. She thought about it and thought about it, and then at the end of the day, she's like, no.
Her reasoning was good, though.
Then she was very happy to be asked to judge though.
And since we're throwing so much towards Billy Ann, I like to throw, you know. By the way, quick side note, I tagged you guys on she's having that tasting thing on the sixteenth. That's Nate Mass, uh, Rachel Mass is Nate's wife, who's starting to do the wine thing, so I just thought if you guys are free, it'd be nice to stop down to Penny's, you know, event if you can.
So when's her event?
Uh, at DOCS on the sixteenth of June, six thirty.
What is it? That means she's having the Skylineers?
I said, I don't drink, but I said I will come down to support you and she goes, oh, that'd be great. And if, I said I was gonna mention it to the board, she said, oh, please do, so I don't know.
What are we to, is it wine tasting?
Uh, yeah.
Oh, okay.
But I'd like to, like Nate Mass has a huge following. He's a foodie for Washington County, and if he, we could get him to be one of the judges.
Yes.
You know what I mean?
Do you know him? Um, so if if we have judges, uh, who, what time are we gonna tell them? What time is the pie thing? What time do we want judges?
Probably, let's say, we usually start with the cornhole because it's earlier and then it starts to get really hot. Maybe like one?
I'm thinking that's about when it was last year for the chili, right?
Right after lunch dessert pie?
I can look up the schedule from last year. I thi- I think we had it on a schedule, didn't we?
So have we advertised yet for people to make the pies?
N- I haven't done anything.
Okay.
That's where I was thinking, maybe Penny would, cause she'd love to do that, you know?
Make pie?
I I'm not volunteering her, but I mean, I think if we brought it up to her, she would jump on it, but.
I think it would be really cool if like the level like competed. I don't know if that would cause like.
I think that's what she was worried about, with the chili.
Be hard to judge.
Yeah, but it's anonymous.
Yeah, that's true. That's true, it was anonymous.
I guess another option would be, um, do we wanna ask any of these other sponsors? Like, do we know anybody from Gateway? Jack, you think you wanna judge? Yeah. They, I know, they're already all all through the township.
It's like three weeks away.
That's right.
A lot of time in, uh, North Carolina, so, um, I could ask Joe.
I just think it's, you know, uh, if they're spending money, you know, they're sponsoring us money, I think, you know, it's a good thing to at least reach out to them, like, hey, great idea.
You need one more, right, to start off with?
We do Christina at Range, we'll do Always Safe, um, pending Penny if she wants to participate or not, and then we'll do Gateway and then, um.
Not to interrupt you, but, uh, the list of sponsors, um, is on that spreadsheet I gave you. That's the top part, the donors, so you could choose from, you know, anybody there.
Where are we doing, like, the Community Day? Sponsors or donors first?
That's an idea. I mean, you could, there's only three, so, um, MCC, which is up here on the hill. Um, Billy Ann's, of course, and then Always Safe, and then you can go from there. Probably wanna ask them first instead of the ones sponsoring it and then.
Was Casio's donation for Fall Festival or for, what was it for?
I didn't, I didn't see any written on it, did you? No, they, yeah, they just, they sent it in as a Cecil Township and, you know, I I was gonna earmark it, like, we got one after Touch a Truck from Bell Landscaping for Touch a Truck, so. You know, I put it in there, but, um. I moved it, uh, no, I I put it in there as as a donation for Touch a Truck, but I I mean, we can roll that money forward.
I was gonna put him on the thing for Community Day.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. It's all in the same pot, so.
So maybe we could ask them if they wanna.
Why we ask, yeah, one of them and see if they're, one of them are interested?
Tom?
Yep. In fact, I have him on my Facebook Messenger. I'll reach out to him.
Well, Tom doesn't own Casio's.
No, Bell Landscaping.
Oh, okay.
Um, he actually, when he messaged me about not being able to do Touch a Truck, he said, please let me know if there's something else I can do to help with, so like, he's a good choice for that.
Good.
Wants to do it.
I'll reach out to him at Bell.
Okay. Uh, one other thing, Jack, too, about our discussion about trying to get everything over on this side and not use Pavilion Three.
Yep.
It also solves the problem about not being able to hear the DJ over on the other side.
Yeah.
Since he's facing that direction.
Yeah, that's, that brings up a good point. We've got those huge speakers there, um, and. Maybe this would be a good time just to test them, you know, I mean, test them beforehand to see if they work, but, uh, you know, where we could put them. Um, maybe further off to the side of the, uh, stage as opposed to have this sound central to the stage, so.
Alright, so back to these vendors. Do we, you think, I mean, they're not gonna be there that long. You think they can set up in the outfield and be okay, Jack? Just right down, just like straight down?
Yeah, I I mean, you know, ta- take a map. I can give you give you a map. You just kind of pencil out where you think things should go. I mean, where's where's Cornhole gonna go? Where's Slip and Slide? Cause we don't wanna, we don't wanna put anybody in the wet area if they, you know, if they don't wanna be in it. Um, but based on what happened last year, we can, we can set them anywhere. It's not like they're gonna tear up the grass and mud and everything like that. It was not that big of a deal, so, I mean, I think we could put those slip and slides anywhere you want to and then put people in the other events around it if you want.
Yeah, I think it might not be a bad idea. If everybody's coming in by the, you know, tennis courts and, you know, they're walking, Cornhole will be right at the stage. And then, you know, they'll shoot them straight out towards the outfield and then boom, right over Pavilion Two.
Do we wanna put the Beatles ice cream truck the same place we had last year's ice cream truck, which was in the grassy area beside the restrooms?
By the restrooms, you mean? Across from tennis courts.
Concession stand and the restrooms by the, um, tennis courts. That's where we had the truck last year.
Yeah, but isn't that where you're gonna have the, uh, uh, competition? Aren't you gonna have the?
We had them further down, didn't we? We had the, the table for the judges.
Table for the judges.
Right next to the concession stand.
Right, they're still right there.
And then the ice cream truck was further down, right?
Yeah.
One of the things we're doing with, uh, um, the Shetland game is we're gonna be putting, uh, food trucks. The, to the right of the stage, um, and it's right and left of the stage, right? But that's for their setup. And, I mean, we could do something similar in that case. It's just a matter of moving people around. I mean, there's plenty of room out there, you know? Just come up with a, I mean, if you wanna put the kids, uh, right at the end of the the path there and that, and just populate that whole area right there. It's a matter of pushing people back, back into that area.
I was saying, maybe the ice cream truck would do that if we put it off the end of the stage by the flagpole.
That's a great idea, and there's plenty of room for it, too.
Yeah.
That would be the attraction which would push people into the kids market.
That would be, yep, that's a great idea. I agree.
Alright, let's work off of that then. We'll put that and then by the flagpole back there, and then we'll just push the vendors straight de- towards Pavilion Two off of that. Off of that side and then we'll keep all the water stuff at Pavilion Two.
Good plan. Okay. Uh, the DJ for. Community Day, three hundred dollars for the entire time, and that is DJ Matt again. Uh, motion?
Motion.
Second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Alright, um, we gotta keep an eye on, you know, money that's targeted because the only other place we can start taking money from is from the Fall Festival. Um, with that, even if I slide the six hundred, the nine hundred and the two forty-four over. We pretty much used up everything that's allotted for Community Day, so how much more do you think you're you're gonna be spending? Or asking for?
I actually had another question on that. Um, you know, I follow all the other parks pages.
Mm-hmm.
And what a lot of them have done for like Community Day is they actually put a form out there saying, you know, we need more sponsors for our Community Day events. And they put, posted out on Facebook, so, you know, anybody could pick up the form and say, yeah, I wanna. Sponsor, donate. Do we want to do anything like that since?
Well, I I I think that's a great idea, but let's let's first talk about the letter that we sent out for sponsorships, okay? It says on there, if you put, you know, if you sponsor so much, um, there'll be a sign and there'll be on on Facebook. All we've been doing, or on social media. All we've been doing up until this point has been putting things out on social media. There has been no signs put out.
No, there were signs.
Where?
They were just the small ones in the fr- frames, but there were signs. I made them for every single event.
I never saw them.
I made them for every event.
I mean, where were they, though?
Well, the one, one, it rained and it blew them all over the place, so they couldn't leave them out, cause it was, they were blowing everywhere because they weren't into the ground.
Fishing Derby, they're at the prize table.
And then, um.
At the prize table.
The last thing, um, all we had was the concession stand and they were, what, four on the concession stand? At each window on the concession stand.
Do we wanna put them up on the fence or get some new signs or?
Yeah, see, that that's what I was thinking. We we have, we have them and zip tying them up there is not that hard. It's just one more task that needs to be done the day of or, you know, I mean. Really, I'd like to see maybe a couple days before the event and then leave them up for a while afterwards. Um, the the idea of putting them up on the cyclone fence was people passing by on on fifty could see them, you know, and that's just more advertisement. Um, it's just, you know, it's something we need to address.
We we agree totally that we need to do something better.
If you want Rick to put them up, you know, it's just a matter of. You know, are we gonna get one sign made and just keep it throughout? Because, I mean, some some of these companies are blur- blurring the lines, you know? They're saying, well, I'm contributing here, but, you know, I'm I'm saying if they contribute at all, let's put it up on every event, you know, just so it's not. Selective or, you know, it's like, well, you you contributed to this one, but you didn't, you know, you know what I mean?
I think it's, it would make things simpler for us, too.
Yeah, and the whole thing with like the size of the signs and the donation and like that just got a little.
Are you thinking same size sign for everybody, um, no matter the size of the donation? Cause, I mean, that's that's detailed stuff that, you know, takes time and 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 effort. And the problem is, I mean, you guys are thinking, you know, um, huge and it's like we're 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 stepping over the little things. And, I mean, I'm fine with doing away with, you know, si- size of the sign, uh, or size of the donation ba- indicates how big your sign is gonna be. That'd be great. If you wanna just keep it consistent like McDonald does, you know, what they'll do is they'll take that whole cyclone fence, uh, in front of the park and just list everybody that. Did anything for that, uh, for that event, you know, and that way you would keep it balanced. It would keep them guessing, you know, who did what.
I actually am in favor of doing that going forward, yes. I am.
I agree.
I also.
Would also like just the idea of. Instead of like saying contributing to an event, just be like, these are our events. Just give your contribution for the whole year.
Mm-hmm.
Because I just feel like some of these budgets are just like artificial, like. I don't know. Like, I don't see why somebody has to donate specifically to Touch a Truck. Why can't they just donate to parks events? Like, when we provide our flyer to everyone, we just list our events and be like, your donation will make all of this happen.
Yeah.
And that's it.
No.
And then we can just move the money around as we see fit without having to be like, oh, well, we have to spend this guy's fifty dollars at Touch a Truck.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't think that was ever the intention. What what I'm doing here is I'm putting it in for what they chose to donate to.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so when a check comes in and says, you know, I want a Fishing Derby, Community Day and Fall Festival, that's where I break it up for, okay?
Our intention was to make sure the sign was up for the event that they indicated they were donating for, but I think we're getting to the point where it's making things so complicated for us. That we're better off going the way you said and just, you know, and then having the sign with everybody on it and. What do you guys think?
What, you mean one sign with everybody or individual signs that are just the same?
One sign with everybody, like Canonsburg does and U C McDonald does it that way?
No, I'm I'm sorry. I didn't mean that one sign for everybody. The individual signs based on who, you know, who contributed, not so much how much, but the fact that they contributed. And then it it would be available throughout all the events, alright, so there's no, um, you know, one-upmanship or anything on the outside saying, look, I, my sign's been up all. All year, yours, you know, yours wasn't. It would be, they contribute to anything. Maybe maybe what the point is, um, these are the events we have. Uh, you know, if you contribute to one, you contribute to all, okay? And then we take everybody that's contributed and put the signs up and they're, that's what's gonna be there. Uh, and if somebody new comes in and put puts money in, we'll we'll put a sign up for them, too, you know?
I like it.
I don't, I don't wanna offend anybody on the outside, you know? I don't want anybody to feel that because they contributed two hundred and fifty dollars, that they're not as important as the twenty-five hundred dollar, you know?
I, I'm all in favor.
And it'll be the same size. And it's a lot less work for us. I I love the idea.
And they can be consistent then, too.
I love the idea. Yeah. It's just a matter of, uh, are we gonna standardize the si- the signs? Are we gonna keep what we have, um, because we've got a variety of them down there, you know?
I think we should look at what we have and what we have the most of and.
Going forward, we'll have a certain type made for anybody new and and that'll be it across the board from now on.
And then we stay with that, whether it be blue and gold or whatever, we stay with that.
Right.
Cause I will be honest, I went back for the last event, which was Touch a Truck. And I tried to go through the signs in the back room to pull them out for the ones that had, and honestly, I just couldn't even get to them. And and I just put out the one I had made because I just couldn't get to them.
Uh, I mean, honestly, let's, I mean, let's put facts to facts. It's been raining and crappy and, you know, that's put a dampener in us to rethink things. You know, the day we're setting up and it's just, it's been, the weather hasn't helped or contributed to us being able to set up longer and do things we need to do, so. Uh, I don't think it's, you know, our malicious intent to not put these signs up by any means or anything like that, or not recognize these people. But, um, yeah, I mean, the weather has just been atrocious for our first three events, so.
And and I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is.
We didn't, we didn't take it that way.
I'm hearing what people are saying, you know, where's my sign, you know, and and I'm like, oh, um, it was there, didn't you see it, you know? Um, and it's just, all I'm trying to do is make it easier because, you know, as we move away from, uh, the effort in the concession stand. We wanna keep people coming back, you know, and keep that attitude positive on the outside.
I mean, another option is I thought, you know, personally, I like the different size signs, cause obviously if I'm spending the most, I would want to be recognized the most, you know? But, I mean, I understand about it being easy and, you know, another option I I was briefly brainstorming was do one big sign, like four by four, five by four sign. And they have Velcro stickers almost and, you know, if they were gonna support this, you know, event, we could just Velcro right onto our sign. Put it outside for everybody to see, you know, or even, you know, permanently attach it to the fence or the concession stand or, you know, something along them lines. But if we just wanna roll, you know, one pot, one signed, then I'm for that, too. It's it's, I'm up for whatever.
How does Velcro stand in the in the weather? I'm not saying leave it out indefinitely, but say we go through a couple more events like we we just came through, alright? Does that, can it, can it stand weather or?
I believe so, yeah, especially if we keep that corrugated, you know, we just do a one by one sign, you know, corrugate it and, you know, you put, you know, Velcro on it. Uh, Velcro, Velcro holds up pretty well, cause it's a, it's a synthetic material, you know, if if anything, the glue will fail before the Velcro will.
Okay.
Um, but, I mean, like I said, I'm up for whatever, you know, you guys wanna do.
Alright, so maybe maybe the first thing is, I know somebody's taken inventory of the signs that we have. And for the, for the new ones, I think we have to have, um, some made. You know, at this point, I'd recommend we don't go back to, um. I forget his name now, um, so maybe.
Tommy.
Tommy, so maybe your guy, uh, over in, uh, wherever he is, um, can, you know.
Yeah, the printing press in Coriopolis, that's where I got them and.
That's where Tommy is, too, so, um.
Why don't we, um, we can do that inventory on movie night?
I think Barb has some some already inventory. I don't know if you have a whole inventory or you just kind of.
I had it all. I have to do it again, um, but I'll, I can do that like during movie night. I'll be in there.
Here's what I'm thinking. County Halling, I don't think we have anything.
No, we don't.
Uh, Harrington's, um. Let's see, we had Coleman Chrome, um, we have something from Billy Ann's, Equitrans.
That's new. That's new.
Bell Landscaping. I mean, those, those are the ones that I'd be looking to, you know, fill in those, those holes, so.
All right, well, I'll get prices too from, um, printing press. I'll be up there like around Monday.
What's our common size now? Twenty-four by eighteen or something like that?
Yeah, well, um, that, that, that's pretty standard.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, I mean, there again, I mean, for your, your five thousand, I mean, we have the range one, we have the gateway one. They're still always gonna be our biggest contributors. So we can keep those, you know, we still use those. I would not suggest ma- getting new ones made. But, you know, as, as new donors come on board, we should, you know, kind of standardize that.
Yeah. We could even put like gold stars or something on.
Easily, yeah.
Like a Velco or something that, yeah.
Or something, you know, for somebody that donates a lot, because, I mean-
Gold stars, you know, silver star?
Yeah.
All right, so you'll get that-
On the tent.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's inventory on the tent while we're there.
Sounds good. Okay, anything else then as far as Community Day goes? Um, I got Stephanie, my friend's phone number that is going to help with the cornhole, so she has that information. It's the same guy that helped us last year. That saved us last year.
Has anybody signed up, like, or?
We have an open registration.
Nothing's out, nothing is-
Nothing's out there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's focus on movie night first.
Yeah.
Nine days at what, nine days?
Yeah, but I, I will be getting it. I, I have no children in my house anymore, so. Okay, any other updates from Project Leads, the Car Cruise, um, will be coming up? Oh, back to Community Day. Is Billy Ann's gonna do the concession stand?
I don't know. I have not talked to her. So, I mean, I would, here's, here's my problem. You know, if, if I talk to her and I, I set something up and then somebody else starts talking to her and, and she's thinking we're all on the same page, so, you know, if any of you guys want to take the lead on that, if Jason wants to take the lead on that, please do so. If not, I'll do it. I'll set it up. Uh, I just don't want to overlap and, and her be told one thing and then find out it's something else, okay? And that's what happened, uh, last time. So, um, let's, let's keep the, you know?
No, I mean, I'm-
Let's ask Jason to do it, because I think he's friends with her.
Yeah.
I, yeah, I ran into her at the store and she was talking about it and she said, you know, I heard some of you don't like to do the concession stand. She goes, I'm open to it, but you have to let me know.
I think part of the problem came in before too, because initially we were just talking about during the Fishing Derby and then extended to doing the whole day when the fishermen were there, so it changed.
Hmm.
And I think that's where some of the confusion between all of you might have come into play, so. This, I mean, this we know it's just gonna be Community Day eleven to three, so. All right, I'll ask Jason to do that then.
Okay.
Um, anything else for Community Day? All right, so then we have the Car Cruise coming up. We know all we do there is the concession stand. It's the Car Cruise where they always want those rolls, right? But we're not gonna do them, correct?
Well, I, I mean, somebody's gonna have to go up there and, you know, they open at six and they're usually sold out by seven, uh, so. Um, you have, you know, if you want to talk to, uh, Norb and if he wants them, um, somebody can go up and get them. They're not good the day after. You have to get them the same day.
They were terrible.
They're just not, yeah.
I mean, I don't like them to begin with, so.
And he wants, uh, Halushka and that's, uh, um, we can do, uh, two. Uh, Steve Hines can do it, which, it was okay last year. Um, but, uh, um, we have another one. Country Fixings can do it as well.
Did they pick a rain date yet?
That's them. I mean, I, I don't-
Okay, well, I'm just saying like, because I don't want, I'm sorry, if it rains this year, I'm for canceling it because I'm, don't want to do that week before Fall Festival again, rain date, like.
That was rough.
If they don't have one picked in advance.
That's why I put it in front of all you to decide that day, you know? It, it was not my decision, unilateral or otherwise. I put it in front of you.
No, I, I know that.
To, um, make the decision. Okay, yeah, I agree. It was not a good idea. You guys were fried by the time you rolled into, into, uh, Fall Festival as I was and it was just, we were just hoping to get through the, the weekend. Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll give him a call and just say, give us a rain date today, you know, or now so that we can, uh, plan on it and it, it should be the following weekend. Now, they have a full schedule, okay? They set this schedule up early in the year and they go from place to place on this, so. I'll, if it's all right with everybody, I'll make the suggestion that if it does get rained out this year, last year was the first time in eighteen years that it was rained out. And, you know, if it gets rained out this year, then, you know, we'll, we'll cancel it for, if everybody's, uh, open for that.
Yeah, it was just too much.
And you know what, too? Panera's makes those big cinnamon rolls, too. Like, maybe we could get-
So does Mattson's, I think, down there.
You know, nobody has to go to Beaver Falls at six AM.
We'll get them at Halushki, but I, I, going to Beaver Falls is a little much.
I'm there almost every day and I'm not going. I don't have to go.
Right.
But Panera's is in Bridgeville, but maybe we could get them to donate or give us a good voice.
I think if they are looking for some type of breakfast item, does it have to be those? They're great, okay, but, I mean, that's a lot of work for somebody to do. For, at the end of the day, we pay out a lot of money for those and then if they don't all sell, then, you know, we're barely breaking even on them.
Anything else on the Fall Festival? We have a hundred and nine vendors as of right now.
Been growing. There's like seven or eight more in the works that are, and I, I know, like we were just saying, I think we're gonna get slammed come July, June, July. A lot of people are waiting to hold off on it, so.
Well, I'm gonna say this again, or-
More picky right now, you know what I mean?
Putting a cap on these or no?
Well, um, one of the things we don't want to do is we don't want to slight the people that have become, you know, for years. Uh, Country Style's one of them. Came in this week, gave me his two hundred dollars and, you know-
Pet Search just came in this week.
Who?
Pet Search.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, so we've got to leave room for the, the faithfuls, the ones that have been here since the nineties, um, and count on coming here, so. Um, that's, that's one thing to think about. Um, we can always move people over across the, the stream. You know, yeah, it's gonna be some doing, but, I mean, we can fit it. We can also take the five foot buffer out from in between them and create more space that way, too.
I mean, I'm, I'm trying not to, like, blanket, you know what I mean? Like, right now I'm trying to be more picky. Like, I was just saying, I, I, no more candle people, no more woodworking people.
Yeah, we have enough candle people.
I'm like, thank you, we'll keep you, you know, your information. I'm targeting direct sales right now, more like, you know, I mean, the ones that we don't have.
We have nine of those right now.
Zebra, things like that, because that's where money's at.
Well, what they're doing is, when they get a no from you, they're calling us. They're calling me or, you know, calling, uh, Dawn and saying, hey, can I? And I'm like, have you talked to, you know, Arden? Have you talked to Wendy? You know?
I'm, I'm trying to be as nice as I can.
Say no, Arden.
I mean, I try to be everybody's best friend on there because, you know, I know what they're going through, but like, right now people are starting to, like, Mary Burns put out her whole schedule of all her events and we're on there. So I called her and said, oh, that's wonderful. Can I cash your check? Oh, no, I don't know if I'm doing that one yet. Said, it's on the, well, I gotta let them off. So, I mean, it's just kind of a-
Tell her the stale date is ninety days on a check.
I thought it was six months. Is it ninety days?
Yeah, it's six months. Yeah, it's, they, you know what? With the machines, they don't even look anymore. They just, they just read the code at the bottom.
I mean, she books three spots. I mean, I know that she's trying to find out if her husband can go so she can go to the wedding, whatever, but, um, I'm trying to find, like, unique, like, the ads that I'm putting out there, unique handmade things, you know what I mean? Things that we don't have, like, we were talking about wood burner, you know what I mean? Things like the caricature guy.
Now, there are thirteen wood vendors, but you cannot tell if they're woodwork.
It says wood decor, but, uh-
Well, how many did we have last year?
Pardon me?
A hundred and thirty-seven.
For what?
And I can tell you now, some of the people didn't show up, so.
They didn't. You're right.
And, yeah, that park was packed last year.
I know.
I'm not sure if we could take a whole lot more, I mean, to be honest with you.
I kind of agree. I mean, we talked about it. I don't want to, like, come in with like, you know, I'm not shooting for like a hundred and fifty. Right now, I'm happy if we, personally, if we had it tomorrow, I'd be okay with the amount of vendors we have. I think it would be a, a great show. I'm, like I said, I'm, I'm picking, like, you're saying-
Targeting, like you said, the caricature.
Targeting, like, okay, this looks like something we don't have before, you know? Like, a woman makes custom bookmarks, uh, the blue. She sent me a thing and all of them, I'm like, these are awesome, but nobody's, we don't have that, so she jumped in. She's, you know what I mean? So, the caricature guy, he's really good. You saw him. So, I want him for Community Day, actually, you know what I mean? I think he'd make a killing on Community Day, but we're going back and forth now on the thing, so, I mean, he's open, but he's doing like the Apple Festival and, but, again, I'm not blanketing and trying to go out and say, oh, please come to our festival.
Now it's pick and choose time.
Uh, I'm, yeah, I totally am.
If he came to Community Day, would he pay?
I told Arden that, that whether we had, no matter when we have the caricature guy, if we have him, that I feel a caricature artist should, the family should be paying the artist for what they're asking to be drawn. It should not be us covering the expense of the caricature office.
No, I agree with that, but I'm asking like, would he, like, because if he came to the Fall Festival, he'd pay a vendor fee, right?
Yeah.
So if he came to Community Day, would he pay a vendor fee? Because that would be helpful for us.
I mean, I'm, I'm feeling him out right now, as of last night, really. He was going back and forth with me because I was like, you know, I, I wanted to like, what, what do you charge? Because he's really good. I mean, it's not like it's somebody who will make him, you know, but I think he'd be great for Community Day. I think, I think he'd do great. So I, last night I was like, you know, for eighty dollars for two days, I think, you know, with the crowds that we get, I think, you know, you know, I mean-
He'd make a killing.
He'd make a killing, so, what, I, I didn't say that. I don't want to be committed to, you know, but I just said it'd be a great opportunity for you and with the crowds we have, so I didn't s- I'm waiting for an answer back for him.
How much does he charge?
He, uh, you mean per picture?
Yeah.
Said, oh, no, he didn't answer me yet. That was last night. I was going-
I seen some of them. They were like twenty-five dollars. I'm like, that's low.
Well, he was at the Meadows. Wendy saw him at the wed- Meadows and passed me his information, so, uh, nice guy, but, I mean, I was looking at, I was actually gonna have you guys look at his Facebook page and kind of look at the things that he does and tell me.
And the other one we were contacting is the one that does the pet portraits?
Yep.
Um.
I think, yeah, we have one signed on that does pet portraits already.
I didn't look.
At least one, yeah.
Oh, we only have one. I mean, if we have one, that's all we need.
Yeah, okay.
But, yeah, right now he's getting to the pick and choose, being very picky, um, like, unless Jack said it's somebody that's been with us so long.
Yeah.
We really want a Tupperware vendor?
No.
Still haven't, we've run into them, but they don't respond, so. All right, anything else for Fall Festival at this time? Okay, Trail of Treats, we don't really have to hit right now. Um, Light Up Night. Um, have you gotten the contact information too, Heather, that, for the people that you said have already gotten in touch with you about helping with something for Light Up Night?
I have not. A response from, uh, Dawn, Pastor Dawn, up at C. The Alliance Church. So that's two right there. Kenny Strain has been pretty sick.
That's me.
You know, uh, our friend, um, um, what's her name? Donna. Donna Sandler will help anywhere, so. I'm not, I'm not as worried about her as I am the other two couples, so, um, that's, I, I have not given, given any contact information.
And you had said you're gonna contact the coral group at the school, right?
I have the Bellevogie group up here at Cray School. We gotta use the stage or, our weather, it's gonna be snow with our luck.
I know.
We're making snowmen that day, you know?
Snowman contest. Oh, my God, that'd be so fun. Could never play it for it.
Yeah? Okay, any new items? Any information from Public Works or anything going on in the park, Jack? Anything they're gonna be doing?
Lot of focus on, uh, um, Klinger Road right now, so a lot of attention's up there. Um, they're fully staffed as far as being able to keep up with, uh, grass cutting and cleaning, uh, um, you know, keeping everything neat. As far as, uh, help on Community Day and others, uh, we're gonna have three people each day to, um, you know, um, to be there to help out in any way they can, so, um, other than that, it's, you know, they're gonna be doing, uh, uh, roofs on, on two of the pavilions. Uh, they're gonna be doing the roof on the stage this year. And we're just gonna keep an eye on those bathrooms because they're taking a lot of abuse. People are trashing those bathrooms worse than we've ever seen. I mean, there's, you know, there's a reason why we have stainless steel toilets in there. Though it's, you know, the, the subject of ridicule, um, the reason is we've been going through so many, uh, porcelain toilets that, uh, stainless steel is the best way to go. They, they can't break them, um, so, uh, side, you know, other than that, water's on, everything's running. Uh, as far as the Porta-John's, uh, concerned, we've been back and forth with RMS. They're claiming that they're switching them out every week and, um, you know, the pictures that have been provided to me that I provided to them prove otherwise. So, uh, we're looking for a new vendor at this point.
I forgot to send you a picture, Jack. Um, we have my daughter's birthday at Pavilion Two. Just happened to be raining that day. There's a hole in that roof at Pavilion Two. If you want to give Emma a heads up, it's getting pretty bad. They're gonna redo it. I have to say, it's, it's due.
Yeah, um, that and the stage. I mean, that's, that's when, you know, when we had the Christmas trees and we were talking about putting them up on there. I, I was afraid for anybody to walk on those because, uh, I mean, you fall through that roof, which at this point is ea- easy to do because they've been up there for a while. So that, those are gonna be changed by the end of the summer.
I don't know if you're all aware, too, we did not keep all the Christmas trees we had. We did donate four of them to-
At least three.
Cannonsburg Old Fashioned Christmas, because we figured trying to get them somewhere and decorating everything was, you know, was not keeping our Christmas simply Christmas. All right, meeting adjourned at... What time is it? I can't see the clock.
Forty.
Forty.
Seven forty.
Yep, seven forty.
Okay.